Well, Mr. Mayor, we're ready when you are.
Thank you, Isaiah. It is Thursday, May 20th. It is 1:00 p.m. This is the regular meeting of the City Council, the Library and Observatory Board, Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the Redevelopment Successor Agency. Isaiah, would you lead us in the flag salute, please?
...the states of America into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kristi, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hobart?
Here.
Councilmember Kite? Councilmember Kite, you're on mute.
President?
Councilmember Smotrich?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Townsend?
Here.
Mayor Wile?
Here. Thank you. We will now have non-agenda public comments. This will be an opportunity for the public to speak on issues that are not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes per speaker. Isaiah, would you handle that for us, please?
Absolutely. So this is an opportunity for any member of the public to make a non-agenda public comment for a maximum of three minutes. If you are participating remotely and would like to make a non-agenda public comment, now is the time to do so. You would hit the Raise Hand button on Zoom or *9 on your telephone to alert us that you would like to make a non-agenda public comment. Before we go to our remote audience, Kristi, do we have any speaker cards?
No, we do not.
Is there anyone here in person that did not fill out a speaker card that would like to make a non-agenda public comment? Okay, seeing no one here. We will go to our remote audience, and it looks like we have one speaker. Alina, go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much. My name is Alina Calamanis. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I'm here to speak to you about your approved project, Section 31, Grand Oasis Crystal Springs. The water assessment about this project in 2019, I believe, has been willfully misrepresented by the developer, which should be cause for you to halt this project. Since I have only three minutes, I am quickly giving you information that I am willing to meet with you and your team to provide you details. In reviewing all this CVWD water assessment information, there is no information about the tremendous amount of water that will be required for this lagoon. This lagoon is 34 acres, 26 football fields, up to 12 feet deep of our drinking water, and the only reference from CVWD is that the project will pay groundwater replenishment fees as mitigation for the water they will use. What that means is the project needs to pay a fairly minimal extra fee to pump all the drinking water they need. Pool companies say on very hot days, pools can lose 1 to 3 inches of water to evaporation. Using just 1 inch a day in my calculation and just using the 140 days of 100-plus degrees we had in 2020, evaporation from the lagoon would be 140 million gallons, a million gallons a day. CVWD publishes that the lagoon will only need 34 million gallons to account for water loss for the entire year. My calculation was only from those 140 days. It doesn't take into account wind evaporation, low humidity, and the other 225 days, which also includes hot water. CVWD uses as part of their calculations pan evaporation numbers from 1923 to 2005. And by the way, in 2005, we only had 99 days above 100 degrees. In the same 2019 report, the developer referenced Aquatane Water Guard as a product that applied to water surfaces, reduces evaporation by as much as 50%. Back in 2019, this product was not approved for distribution in the United States. I contacted Aquatane, and it confirmed to me that the product has never been improved in the U.S., and they have withdrawn their application for clearance for use in human water consumption. Perhaps the developer thought in 2019 they would be cleared by 2021. It has not and will not be clear for this project. Another 34-acre lagoon by the same company, Crystal Lagoons, is their only other desert lagoon, and it's found in Egypt and is filled with 62 million gallons of water, which is from underground aquifers of salty water. This water has no alternative use. It is filled with saltwater so they can circulate water from their saltwater aquifer to keep the lagoon cool enough to use in the summer. With the Colorado River, the Colorado River is used to replenish our aquifers. It's very clear that recent developments, that Coachella Valley allocations may be slashed because of the diminishing water in the river. If state calls for a water emergency, what happens? The lagoon cannot reduce water usage or use recycled water.
Please wrap up your comment. Your time's up.
Okay, thank you very much. Last thing I'll say is that they always say golf courses use less water. I have done calculations for that, too, and golf courses can reduce, stop watering, or use recycled water. This lagoon cannot. I think that we have to take a look back at that. I think there were misrepresentations, and we can't have that, especially in a drought, a lagoon that's going to be using that much water. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no other speakers, we'll close the non-agenda public comment, and I will return this back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Isaiah. I will now ask my colleagues for any comments that they might have. Housekeeping reminder to keep yourself on mute when you're not talking. Richard, do you have any council comments today?
Thank you, Mayor. I do not.
Okay. Iris, do you have any?
Nothing for today. Thank you.
All right. Dana, any council comments?
No, thank you.
Charlie?
No, thank you. Not at this time.
All right. I merely make one brief comment that I had the pleasure of attending the Desert Theatrical performance last Saturday at the amphitheater. It was just delightful. I hope a number of people will avail themselves of it. You know, it's our version of the Hollywood Bowl or the Greek Theater. It's just a charming way to spend the evening. And kudos to the marketing department and Desert Theatricals for putting on such a delightful performance. With that, I will ask the city manager if he has any comments.
None today, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to the minutes of the regular meeting of May 6 and the budget study session of May 12. Isaiah, do we have any comments from the public regarding this item?
No, we do not.
All right. Do my colleagues have any comments regarding the minutes of either of those issues?
Nothing from me.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move approval of the May 6 regular meeting.
Second.
Okay. Does that also include the May 12 special meeting budget study session?
If you would like.
Yes, I think we can combine the two.
Thank you.
Is there a second on that motion?
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Kristi, if you would, please.
Councilmember Hobart?
Hi.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. Isaiah, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the City Council, you have five items on the consent calendar for your consideration. Item number one is to waive the full reading of all ordinances introduced or adopted pursuant to this agenda. Item number two is to adopt Ordinance Number 1182, second reading, levying special taxes within City of Rancho Mirage Community Facilities District Number 4C, and this relates to the Del Webb Project. Item number three is Amendment Number 2 to the Third Amendment and Restatement of the Coachella Valley Association of Governments' Joint Powers Agreement establishing the 29 Palms Band of Mission Indians as a formal member of SEVAG. Item number four are contracts. Item number five are demands. And before we move to council comments, questions, or a motion, if any member of the public would like to speak on one of these five items from the consent calendar, now is the time to do so. If you are on Zoom, you would hit the Raise Hand button. If you are on your telephone, you would hit *9 to make a comment on the consent calendar at this time. Kristi, do we have any speaker cards?
We do not.
Okay. Anyone here in the audience that would like to speak on the consent calendar? Okay, seeing no one here in person, seeing no one on the remote audience, we'll close the public comment period for the consent calendar. And, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn this back over to the council.
All right, thank you, Isaiah. Is there anyone on the council that has a comment regarding the consent calendar? Desires to pull any item?
Is that... Oh, we're going back to the consent item. That's not...
We are on the consent calendar now?
Right. Item number three is the one we're talking about. Is that correct? Number three of the consent calendar and item number three therein having to do with the Coachella Valley Association of Governments.
That's correct.
Okay. What I would suggest we do is that we have our city attorney examine the effect of such a change. And does the new member... I get to vote on everything. There are some very significant issues affecting Rancho Mirage that are maybe a vote or two away from having a majority. And I'd like to know before we approve this new group, I'd like to know where they stand on a batch of issues that do affect us very much.
Dana, I'll just comment that at the SEVAG meeting and at the executive committee meeting, the 29 Palms Band of Mission Indians was elected to be a formal member of SEVAG unanimously. So they are included as part of SEVAG now. And so that's really where their vote would come in. It would be part of SEVAG.
Yeah, and that's what scares me.
Well, are you suggesting that you decline to vote on this particular item? Is that correct?
No, I'm suggesting that we ask our city attorney to give us a report as to what some of the effect of the new admission would be on our city, and in particular, a handful of the issues that have been extremely important over the past few years. I mean, we don't know how that's going to affect us. I think it'd be good for us to have an idea in advance. And no offense to the band of mission Indians, they have every right to join and to apply to join, but we also have a right to protect whatever our interests are, if any are affected. And it takes an attorney to determine if any are affected.
And I would agree with Dana. And if our city attorney has any information that he can let us know and let the public know about that might be affecting us in Rancho Mirage, it would be good for all of us to know.
I think so. And I can't imagine what a one-month delay would be so bad for somebody wanting to become part of SEVAG.
Okay. Well, they already have been elected to be part of SEVAG. We're merely withholding our position here. So it's your desire to have that item pulled from the consent calendar and to be voted on separately. Is that correct?
Yes, and to be first reviewed and analyzed by our city attorney.
Okay. Any other comments from the council? Okay, there's no other comments, and I'll call for a motion for approval of Items 1, 2, 4, and 5.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve consent calendar, Items Number 1, 2, 4, and 5.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Kristi, if you would, please.
Councilmember Hobart?
Here. Yes.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right. I'll have a second motion regarding Item 3, which Dana desires to pursue with information from the city attorney as to the position here. So I will call for a motion on Item Number 3. Do I hear a motion?
You're talking about a motion to what? Right now, it's just a motion to table it for one month or two, whatever.
Is that your motion?
Yeah, that would be my motion. That would be consistent with what I was saying, I think.
Then there's a motion to table it.
And I will second that.
And there's a second. Kristi, if you would, please.
Councilmember Hobart?
Yes.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, and Item 3 then will be tabled. The next item is Number 6.
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
I don't want to interfere or interrupt unnecessarily, but technically, it's not a motion to table. It's a motion to suspend or something like that. We're not tabling it. We're just suspending a decision on it. And I just don't know if that makes a difference or not. That's the only reason... I mean, it sounds like a motion to table would be fine, that you could take it off the table, and probably you can, so... Also, I'll go back to originally. Yes, I'll vote yes to table it.
Yeah, I don't think it needs to be amended.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Steve Q. It won't take much longer... It won't take long to review this matter.
I wouldn't think so. Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Item 6 is the ordinance setting the date of the general municipal election on the same date of statewide general election and extending the terms of current council members to coincide with same. Kristi, if you would, please.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor and council members, the City of Rancho Mirage general municipal elections have historically been held on the second Tuesday in April in each even-numbered year as permitted by the California Elections Code. California statewide general elections are held on the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November of each even-numbered year. The California Voter Participation Rights Act, which took effect on January 1, 2018, prohibits cities from holding their general municipal election on a date other than a statewide general election date if holding an election on a non-concurrent date has previously resulted in a significant decrease in voter turnout. Significant decrease is defined as 25% less than the average voter turnout within the city for the previous four statewide general elections. When the California Voter Participation Rights Act became law, the city clerk and city attorney conducted an analysis to determine whether the City of Rancho Mirage was required to consolidate its general municipal election with the statewide general election. It was determined that the city was not required to change to November elections at that time. The city was also not required to consolidate with the statewide general election based on voter turnout for the city's 2018 election. However, voter turnout for the city's 2020 election was 28.59% lower than the average Rancho Mirage voter turnout for statewide general elections between 2012 and 2018, which exceeded the 25% threshold. To comply with current state law, the city must move its April 2022 general municipal election and subsequent general municipal elections to coincide with the November 2022 statewide general election and subsequent November statewide general elections. It is recommended that the city council introduce for first reading an ordinance setting the date of Rancho Mirage general municipal elections on the same date of statewide general elections and extending the terms of current council members to coincide with the same. That concludes my report, and I'm available to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. Isaiah, are there any public comments on this item?
If any member of the public would like to speak on Item Number 6, now is the time to do so. If you are participating remotely, you would hit the Raise Hand button on Zoom, or if you are on your telephone, you would hit *9 to make a public comment on this item. Kristi, do we have any speaker cards?
We do not.
Okay. Is there anyone here in person that did not complete a speaker card but wants to make a comment on this item? Okay, seeing no one here in person, let's go to our remote audience. Give me one moment. Kate Spates, go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I would like to commend you for listening to the evidence the Rancho Mirage Forward Group has presented regarding aligning the Rancho Mirage City Council elections with federal and state elections. It not only makes sense, but the data clearly supports it. Now, I hope you will also consider changing the council meeting time to early evening so more residents can attend and actively participate in our local government. A council is only as good as it is open to its community. Each of you has been elected to serve as a voice of our community. However, community participation in meetings is paramount. To ensure trust and confidence, our council represents all of our interests. It is vital our council is available to listen without an agenda or criticism. It is vital our council looks toward the future of Rancho Mirage and considers who will continue the good work you have done. It is logical to suggest fresh perspectives, diverse backgrounds, and experience are the makings for a good council. I thank you.
All right, seeing no one else that has indicated they would like to speak, we'll close the public comment period, and I'll return this to the council.
Thank you, Isaiah. Do any of the council members have any comments regarding this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Richard.
I had a question of Kristi, and that has to do with the current way we handle our election with mail-in ballots. Will that be eliminated at this point?
No, it will not.
So the current residents in Rancho Mirage will be able to vote by mail? Or will they have a choice of absentee ballots? Or how will that be handled?
Correct. They will still receive their vote-by-mail ballots, but the difference will be there will be vote centers, which used to be called the polling places. They're now vote centers. So just like our last statewide election, we had the library, and I believe a place at the river was a vote center. And so they'll be able to go there if they have any issues, whereas we don't have those during the April elections.
Thank you.
Are there any other council comments?
Yes, I have a comment because I think that if we... Hello?
Isaiah, go ahead.
Okay. As long as we are complying with the state regulations and rules, I think that if we are going to start changing the time of our meeting, what we need to do is have some kind of response from our residents. And supposedly, over 90% of our residents, which is about 17,000 people, wanted to change the date and wanted to change the time. So what I would recommend is that if there are people out there who would like to change the time from 1 o'clock to another time, that they notify us. I know Indian Wells has their meeting time at 1:30. But we can change our time, if needed, to another time, maybe 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock, maybe 5 o'clock, maybe 7 o'clock. So if there are people whose evenings are not available for an evening meeting and may wish to skip our meetings during the day, then I hope they will respond and let us know. And if there are people who don't want to drive at night or who are unable to drive at night or want to spend time with their families, I hope they will also let us know, too. And also, as far as people who work during the day and cannot come to a meeting, I hope that they will let us know also what time a meeting they feel comfortable with and would let us know so we can make any changes necessary. We want to accommodate as many people as possible. I have said that in the past. If we have a couple hundred people that show up, we will accommodate them. But however many people show up, we are welcoming them. We would like their opinions. And if there are people who want a time change, now is the time to let us know. So please email us, call us at City Hall, or please come to the podium and let us know what your thoughts are. We want to accommodate everyone we can, and now is the time to let us know what your preferences are and what will meet with your schedule. Thank you so much.
Are there any other comments? Seeing none, I will make a motion that the city council approve introduction of ordinance number, next in order, first reading, setting the date of general municipal election on the same date of statewide general election and extending the terms of current council members to coincide with same.
Second the motion.
Kristi, there's a motion and a second roll call, please.
Councilmember Hobart?
Ah, yes.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. The next item will be the Fiscal Year 2021/2022 Levy of Assessments for Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance District Number 87-01. That'll be presented by Calver Pascal. If you would, Calver.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. The city has five special benefit zones born from the development agreement between the property developer and the city in one citywide median zone under Landscape and Lighting District 8701. The district exists for the purpose of maintaining landscape and lighting in each specific zone. The zones within the district are assessed on a cost-recovery basis, assessing parcel owners for the associated maintenance costs of the specific zone. The citywide landscape and lighting zones, which covers the city medians, is assessed to parcel owners citywide. The five special benefit zones are assessed only to the parcels receiving the direct and special benefit. To determine whether the assessment needs to be revised, the city contracts with Willdan Financial Services to prepare a engineer's annual levy report. The engineer's annual levy report factors the revenue and expenses associated with each zone, provides a cost-recovery estimate for each zone. The recommendations in the attached engineer's report are based on cost recovery and constitute minor adjustments. Today's motions does not constitute a final approval. They simply initiate the levy proceedings. A final approval is scheduled for the June 3 city council meeting. A public notice will be issued in the local paper noticing the June 3 meeting, and a public hearing will be conducted during the June 3 meeting, allowing residents the opportunity to speak on proposed assessments. Staff is recommending that the city council approve the attached resolutions that declares the city intent to levy, sets the public hearing date for June 3, 2021. This concludes my presentation. I will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Calver. Isaiah, are there any public comments regarding this item?
If any member of the public would like to speak on this item, now is the time to do so. If you are participating remotely, you would hit the Raise Hand button on Zoom or *9 on your telephone. Kristi, do we have any speaker cards?
We do not.
Is there any member of the public that is here that would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one here in person, we will go to our remote audience. Okay, seeing no one there. Mr. Mayor, we'll close the public comment period, and I will return this to the council.
Thank you, Isaiah. Is there anyone on the council that would like to make a comment regarding this item?
I have no comment, but if you wish, I will read to continue the sound.
Assuming no one else has a comment, that would be appropriate. Please go ahead, Charlie.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council, A, adopted resolution number 2021, next in order, initiating proceedings for the annual levy of assessments for the Ranch Mirage Consolidated Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance Assessment District number 8701 for fiscal year 2021, '22, and B, adopt resolution number 2021, next in order, declaring its intention to levy annual assessments for the Ranch Mirage Consolidated Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance Assessment District number 87-01 for fiscal year 2021, '22, and C, adopt resolution number 2021, next in order, for preliminary approval of the engineer's annual levy report for the Ranch Mirage Consolidated Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance Assessment District number 8701 for fiscal year 2021, '22.
I'll second that.
And there's a motion and a second. Kristi, if you would, please.
Councilmember Hobart?
Yes.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the annual appointments to city boards and commissions, an appointment of a representative to serve on the Palm Springs International Airport Commission. Uh, Kristi, uh, if you would, handle this, please.
Certainly. So the city annually seeks volunteers to serve on its boards and commissions. Beginning in late March, the City Clerk's Office issued a notice inviting applications for the one-year city board and commission term beginning June 1st. The notice also invited applications for a city representative to serve on the Palm Springs International Airport Commission for the three-year term beginning July 1st. The notice was published twice in the Desert Sun newspaper and distributed via eBlast. It was also posted at City Hall, at the library, and on the city's website. All applications received are on file in my office. Copies of all applications were promptly provided to the city council for review and consideration. Each council member provided me with their nominations, which shall be confirmed by a majority vote of the council. In a moment, I will read your nominations for all 12 boards and commissions, as well as the airport commission. You may make one motion to confirm the entire slate of appointments. Any nomination requiring further consideration may be pulled from the slate for separate action. Are there any questions before I read the slate of nominations?
Not for me.
Okay.
No, please proceed.
Architectural Review Board nominees are Jarvis Payne, Sean Lockyer, Mark Lanning, Tom Howell, Lance O'Donnell, Ray Lopez, Narendra Patel, Paul Sturwald. Commission, Community Cultural Commission nominees are Kayla Pressman, Michael O'Keefe, Sally Trademan, Donna Malouf, Frank Farino, and the city council liaisons to this commission are councilmember Smotrich and Mayor Protem Townsend. Community Emergency Preparedness Commission nominees are Robert Brown, Mary Levine, Kirk Dandridge, David Richardson, Mary Lou Suter, Technical Advisor Katie Stice, and Technical Advisor Ed Thomas. Community Parks and Trails Commission nominees are Celeste Visite, Dennis Constant, Barry Lynn Freebie, Eric Wright, Fred Strup. Historic Preservation Commission nominees are Carol Leibowitz, Frank Lopez, Christian Braun, Greg Trappain, and Ray Keller. Housing Commission nominees are Barbara Barrett, Columba Quintero, Scott Newton, excuse me, Michael Pete Paduano, Darrell Mulvahill, Mary Bundy, and Velma Coombs. Library and Observatory Advisory Commission nominees are Ron Treet, Frank Brightwell, Joe Roberson, Lois Reese, Steve Eizer, and Technical Advisor Patrick Lambright. City Council Liaisons on this commission are councilmember Hobart and Mayor Protem Townsend. Library and Observatory Foundation Board nominees are Jamie Kabler, Lucy Tagmire, Christine Hughes, Leslie Uso, Patrice Merritt, Robert Moon, Claudette Pays, and my, Mayor Wile also serves on this commission. Moba Home Fair Practices Commission nominees are Marlene Marie Cassetta, Mike Renner, Jason Agostini, Diane Lynn, Jerry Berquist, and Stan Markowitz. Planning Commission nominees are Murray Bryant, David Gray, Bill Maxwell, Steve Downs, and Sherry Stewart. Speaker Series Commission nominees are Charles Barrett, Lynn Malato, Candy Glickman, Robert Berg, Mary Willis, and City Council Liaisons for the commission are councilmember Hobart and councilmember Smotrich. Traffic Safety Commission nominees are Sidney Burks, Michael Ziskind, Stephen Shuey, Don Smith, Dell Smith, Sheriff Sergeant Matthew Coser, and COP Captain Rich Ronzello. In addition, the mayor's nominee for city representative on the Palm Springs International Airport Commission is Thomas Wheel. That completes the list of nominations. Any vacancies remaining will be considered at a future meeting. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Kristi. Are there any public comments regarding the, uh, annual appointments to the commissions, Isaiah?
Uh, if any member of the public would like to speak on this item, now's the time to do so. If you are participating on Zoom, you would hit the raise hand button. If you're on the telephone, you would hit star nine. Kristi, do we have any speaker cards?
We do not.
Is there anyone here in person that would like to speak?
Councilmembers and all the staff here today. Um, I'm Mary Lou Suter. I chair the Emergency Preparedness Commission this past year, and I just wanted to point out what, how rewarding it is to citizens of Ranch Mirage to participate in city government in such a meaningful way. So our mission is to inform the public, the residents and the businesses, as to what emergent, what you should do in case of an emergency, particularly an earthquake. So we've worked on various kinds of public presentations, uh, presentations to HOAs, uh, various kinds of publications that we provide, and just a variety of efforts. Uh, the commission members are totally dedicated and excited to be able to participate this way, and I'm grateful for yet one more year, uh, to, uh, do this fine work with these remarkable people. So I'm grateful, and I know the other commissioners are as well. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mary Lou. Is there anyone else here in person that would like to make a comment? Come on up, Bill.
Good afternoon, uh, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, and Isaiah, of course, and staff. As you all know, I've been, uh, your representative on the, uh, Palm Springs International Airport Commission for the last, what, six, six years, little over six years? And I just want to thank you very much for allowing me to represent you. I have enjoyed serving on that commission tremendously, and, uh, uh, I, uh, I don't know who my successor, well, the name, uh, I'm not familiar with, but my successor, I hope, uh, he will fulfill your expectations as much as I think I have. So again, thank you very much. And, uh, by the way, uh, I still have another month to go, so I think I'll give you one last, uh, presentation, uh, next month on, uh, the latest happenings at the airport. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. You've done a great job on that commission. We appreciate your, uh, serving on it. Is there anyone else here in person that would like to make a comment? All right. We will go to our remote audience, and this speaker is identified as Mid-City West Community Council Chair. If you could please identify yourself and make your comment.
I apologize for that name. Zoom likes to make things up. Uh, this is Michael Schneider. Uh, I just wanted to comment, I've now applied twice to the traffic commission, once for a vacancy and once for the normal cycle, and haven't been able to get over the finish line and be appointed. And I understand these are competitive positions. However, the default seems to simply reappoint people that want to stay for another term, and in this case, it appears that nearly everyone or everyone from the traffic commission wanted to go for another term, and so that's what happened. So I just wanted to suggest to you that perhaps fresh blood, new blood, perspectives might be good for the city and these commissions, and I hope that you will consider my application at the first possible opportunity for the traffic commission. As so, as shown by my dedication in attending every city council meeting for nearly the last year, I remain interested in donating my time to the city, and I hope that my interest and my energy doesn't go to waste. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Uh, seeing no other speakers, uh, I'll return this over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Isaiah. Uh, does anybody on the council have any comments regarding the nominations?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just like to make a brief comment and congratulate everybody who got appointed at today's meeting, and just say that I was overwhelmed by the quality of applicants this year. It just seems to get better every year, and the number of people in our city that are really interested in these commissions continues to increase. So we've got the best residents in the valley, and therefore we end up with the best commissions. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. I'll echo those statements. Uh, the commissioners, uh, put in endless hours. They dedicate their time. Uh, we thank them so very much, uh, for their contribution, and, uh, we congratulate, uh, those new commission members that may be elected in the next few minutes, and wish them every success. Uh, if there are no other comments, I'll ask for a motion on this item.
Well, I will make a motion, then, that the City Council ratify nominations of members to serve on the city's various boards, commissions for the one-year term beginning June 1st, 2021, ratify the nominations of a representative to serve on the Palm Springs International Airport Commission for the three-year term beginning July 1st, 2021, and waive any applicable term limits.
And I'll second that.
Kristi, there's a motion and a second roll call, please.
Councilmember Hobart?
Yes.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Wile?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
And again, I congratulate everybody that was just elected, uh, and, uh, we wish you the best. Thank you for making a contribution. Uh, the next item is the, uh, the coronavirus disease 2019 COVID-19 update. Uh, Isaiah, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will turn this over to Gabe Cottin, our Director of Marketing.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerman. Mr. Mayor, City Council, we're here to give our, uh, bi-monthly update, um, with the coronavirus. Uh, no specific action here today unless there's deemed one necessary, uh, but just wanted to update you on some of the, uh, continuing programs that the city is doing in the relief efforts. Uh, the county is still, the state in this county is still in the orange tier. Riverside County is still in the orange tier, so we haven't hit the matrix, the metrics to, uh, to, uh, go into the yellow tier at this time. However, it has been announced that the June 15th date will be the state's reopening, um, plan. So, uh, that's, that's coming rather quickly. Face covering, um, order is, is still in effect and tied to the state of California. As you might have read or seen, that the CDC came out with some relaxed guidelines. However, the state came back and, uh, said it's going to wait until the June 15th date. Um, and so that, the state's order still remains in place, and the city's order is still tied to that one. So, uh, no changes in that until next month. Um, and we've also have our no-cost, uh, COVID testing has continued to date. We're about close to 42,000 tests conducted, and we've also been working with that group. Um, it currently is in, uh, in place till May 28th, but we're extending that till the June 18th, Friday, June 18th, so we'll start communicating that out. That puts us about a week past, a few days past, the June 15th date. But now that testing's very accessible, uh, throughout the city and the heat, because the, it's a drive-through site and people are standing outside in our library parking lot, we're going to, uh, to start to, um, phase that out over the next three to four weeks, with June 18th being the final date for the curative testing at our library. But that'll, uh, that'll equate to about six and a half months and close to 45,000 tests conducted. We were the first city to offer that, the first location in the mid-valley to offer a drive-through, uh, no-cost solution. Uh, and it was, uh, it was utilized by not only our residents, but our neighboring cities as well. And, uh, and then finally, our Great Plates Program continues. Uh, to date, we've have about 371 participants enrolled, and to date, about 333,000, a little over 333,000 meals have been delivered to those homes of, uh, of our senior residents most in need, and that's delivered, uh, total funds delivered to local restaurants through this program over the last 13-plus months, almost 13 months, has been 7.3 million. Um, and again, the city's cost share for that, had the FEMA not picked up 100%, would have been about 450,000. Um, and right now, the program's approved through June 7th. So another couple of weeks, uh, of that program, um, before we hear word if it's going to be extended or not. So that's all of our updates today, available for any questions, and, uh, thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you. Um, Gabe, are there any, uh, any public comments regarding that item? Isaiah?
If any, uh, member of the public would like to speak on this item, now's the time to do so. Uh, if you are on Zoom, you would hit the raise hand button. If you were on the telephone, you would hit star nine. Kristi, do we have any speaker cards?
No, we do not.
Is there anyone here in person that would like to make a comment on this item? Seeing no one in person, we will go to our remote audience. Seeing no one in the remote audience either, I'll turn this back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Isaiah. Uh, are there any council comments regarding, uh, that item? It doesn't require a motion of any kind? Uh, if there are no comments, I'll merely make...
Mr. Mayor, does not...
Yes, Charlie, go ahead.
On behalf of the council and staff and the city of Ranch Mirage, Gabe, and your group, you've done a wonderful, outstanding service on the situation that, uh, the world has faced, and I commend you and everybody that had the input to bring this forth on behalf of the citizens and the city of Ranch Mirage. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Um, well spoken, and it appears that the world is coming back to some degree of normalcy. Uh, some of you may have heard that they announced, uh, during the course of today that the BMP Paribus Tennis Tournament, uh, will be played this October, uh, a date to be announced. So that's the first big, major event, um, to, again, to be rescheduled. Uh, that along with, as we know, Coachella Fest and Stagecoach, uh, contribute enormously to the, uh, to the income of the valley. So we're getting back there, and, uh, Ranch Mirage has certainly done, uh, its share to contribute. Uh, we will now go, our, our learned council is, uh, ready to tell us, uh, what is going to be closed, uh, covered in the closed session, uh, where we will recess in a moment. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the City Council, at this point, is going to recess into closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9, um, regarding the following pending litigation matters. Vacation Rental Owners and Neighbors of Ranch Mirage and Ranch Mirage Vacation Rentals LLC et al. versus City of Ranch Mirage, Save Ranch Mirage versus City of Ranch Mirage, Mo, Hovtown Colony LLC versus City of Ranch Mirage, and Horizon Pacific Ranchel Cove versus City of Ranch Mirage. And again, these are just updates. And that's it.
All right. Well, thank you, Steve. We will see you shortly in a closed session. Uh, with that, Isaiah, I will turn it over to you as we will leave this meeting and go into closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, any member of the public is welcome to stay on this link, and we report out at the end of closed session, any applicable reportable action. Uh, the City Council members will join a separate closed session link, but the members of the public, if you're interested in hanging out, can stay on this link. Thank you. It is, uh, 2:55, and the City Council took no reportable action in closed session. It is, uh, 2:55, and the city council took no reportable action in closed session. This meeting is adjourned.